Present. I know that Mayor Bibi is gone and Counselor Law is gone. Gail Merritt?
Present.
Okay. And Janet Hutchison?
Here.
And Counselor Youngman?
Here.
And Counselor Papke?
Not here.
Not here, so we have, we have four of the seven of us, so we do have an official quorum. So with that, please rise and say the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Forrester, are there any additions to the agenda?
Thank you, Counselor Uffelman. We do have one addition this evening. Mr. Casey Daly from the Crook County Fairgrounds, the director at the fairgrounds, will be giving us a quick presentation under council business.
Okay, got it. All right. Any other agenda items from the council that we're not aware of? All right, let's move on. Then we have the consent agenda, regular meeting brief from March 9th, retail clothes choices, retail therapy, store secondhand and police property conversion. Are there any questions about the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as circulated?
This is Counselor Youngman. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as circulated.
Thank you, Counselor Youngman. Is there a second?
I'll second it. This is Counselor Merritt.
Thank you very much. Again, are there any questions or concerns? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Counselor Hutchison?
Aye.
Counselor Youngman?
Aye.
Counselor Merritt?
Aye.
And Council President says aye as well, so the motion carries unanimously and we will move on. We have nothing under visitors appearances and requests to my knowledge. So we will continue on to council business. And Casey Daly, Mr. Daly, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm kind of wearing two hats tonight. I'm here representing the fairgrounds, but I'm also representing the Oregon Fairs Association, which I'm now the president of for the next two years. Here to ask you, the city to consider supporting House Bill 3173, which is sponsored by Greg Smith. It's a funding bill. We historically have gotten lottery funds over the years for the last 20 years, and it has been capped at $53,000 per fair throughout the whole state. This bill is, it's got a two components to it. The first is it lifts the cap of the lottery dollars that we could share in over the, throughout the year. The second piece of it is, is it directs the DAS to put aside some money to do a capital assessment of all the fairgrounds throughout the state, including the state fairgrounds of their capital needs and bring that assessment back to the legislature. So then we would go back for our second meeting and try to obtain funding through the legislator for some of the capital needs throughout the state. As you all know, the fairgrounds, there are many fairgrounds throughout the state, including ours here in town that are in need of some repair and updating. And this is kind of the object to this. So we're just here to ask that you consider supporting the bill. And I would answer any questions that I can.
Are there any questions? Gail, you're.
Yeah, I discovered that. Casey, could you just explain to everybody how important our fairground is to the community? We are not just the fair and not just the rodeo or their horse races. So could you elaborate?
Sure. So most of the fairgrounds throughout the state operate all year round, including us. We have our marquee events that we host every year and most everybody's familiar with that. But we operate year round. We operate when it snows, when it rains. We also operate when we have emergencies. This last past year, we operated as a fire camp for several months. And we're currently operating as a vaccine facility. So we, we are very, very community driven. We support the community when we can. We, we host police training in the buildings down there. We, we host health department things that go on down there. Right now, we're getting, hopefully getting ready for the Crooked River Roundup. We're hosting 4H trainings. So we, we do an awful lot. We bring an awful lot to the community and there's a lot of folks that don't see that. And so we, we try to promote ourselves and you know, we would just try to be there for the community. A good example is just, we just had the Shamrock Run. Well, all those picnic tables down there and all of those poles and all of that equipment comes from the fairgrounds. We deliver it, set it up, get it back. But a lot of people don't see that stuff. And so we are very, we're very involved in what goes on in the community. And we're, we're one of the economic engines that, of the county. And I know that the, the city fathers and the county administration, they realize that, but there's a lot of folks in town that, well, they just don't see it. And so we, we kind of have to toot our own horn.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Mayor, Counsel President, I, sorry about that, former mayor. Casey, do you have a draft that you could get to, get to us, a draft letter with some points on it that we could fix up, have Lisa and I work on that a little bit and get it signed?
Yes, I will do that. Steve, we, I actually was emailing back and forth with Lisa this morning about that. We didn't, we didn't have a, a letter together, but we will get you one.
Okay, well, if the council supports that, I could get that draft out for a quick approval, you know, real quickly in the morning, Lisa and I can. But it's up to council whether they want to move forward with this.
Janet, or pardon me, Counselor Youngman or Counselor Hutchison, do either of you have any comments?
Well, I'm just kind of, this is Counselor Youngman. So this resolution is at the state level right now?
I don't believe it's a, yeah.
And what was the number again on that?
3173.
313?
3173, House Bill 3173.
Okay, and so this is going to be increasing funds to the fairgrounds if passed?
Casey, is that correct?
It will. Correct. It will, it will remove the cap of the lottery dollars that the, all the fairgrounds throughout the state receive. Currently, we receive $53,000 each, and that is every fairgrounds in the, in the state. That is capped, and this will remove the cap.
Thank you.
Counselor Hutchison, any comments?
Casey, this is Counselor Hutchison. So is there certain criteria in this House bill that fairgrounds would have to meet in order to get additional allocated funds or just allocated funds?
This would be just allocated funds. We do have requirements that we, that we meet every year. It is mostly based on the annual fair, how many animals, how many 4H kids we have enrolled, the attendance at fair, what kind of entertainment we had, what kind of educational displays we have, what do we, what do we produce for the community? And then that is rolled up in a report every year that I submit to the state and it goes to the legislator.
Okay, so I think you also talked about improvements at the fairgrounds that so many of them need. So it, it sounded like that was going to be a part of it too. So you have to specify what improvements the fairgrounds would need to try to get additional money?
So, so the, the bill is a two-pronged bill. The first portion of it's the lottery dollars. The second portion of the bill directs the DAS to set aside some money for a capital assessments for every fairground in the state. And once that assessment is done, that report would go back to the legislator, legislators. And then we would regroup to see if there is any bonding money available or any capital money available to do those improvements.
Okay, then I have one other question. Who is DAS? What does that stand for?
Department of Administrative Services through the state.
Okay.
I apologize.
No, thank you very much.
If there are no objections, I will have a letter drafted tomorrow morning and sign it on behalf of the city council. Is that acceptable to the council? We won't do a formal motion, just a, just a.
Consensus.
Consensus.
This is Counselor Hutchison. I'm okay with it.
Good.
This is Counselor Youngman. I'm okay with that too. And I'm looking at the bill online right now and it, it looks fairly decent.
Good. Okay.
This is Counselor Merritt and I'm definitely in favor of it.
Good. Well, we'll get a letter out tomorrow morning, Casey. Thank you for bringing it to our attention and we'll move on.
Okay, thank you.
That's then tomorrow. Thank you. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
This is Counselor Hutchison. Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Out of Casey of us, the two Steves, are, once that letter is completed and approved, are you guys going to send it to us so we can see what we stated?
I think probably we would need to send that to you before we, for your approval.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll, we'll, we'll get it out tomorrow sometime.
Casey.
Anything else on that? All right, hearing none, we will, we will get that handled tomorrow and move on. That's it for council business. So under staff reports and requests, city managers report, Mr. Forrester.
Thank you, Mr. Uffelman, Council President Uffelman. So tonight, we'll start out with a council reminder that this Thursday will be another Z tell with our state legislators. Might be an interesting one. That starts at 7:10. If you'd like to participate, please let Lisa or I know. If you're interested and we can get you the Zoom information. Also, Lisa Morgan is working on scheduling our council strategy session. As you know, we had to postpone that. We have a poll out for consideration. I would like to ask the council that if you would like Lisa to include Saturdays or even Sundays to try to make it easier for everybody to get together, just give us a, a ring or a quick email to that effect. I don't know that we'll need to do that, but if, if that would be helpful for the council, just let us know and we can include those in our doodle poll for scheduling. In addition to that, as terms of scheduling, we also are planning on a DEI Diversity Equity and Inclusion Workshop in April. And we'll get that scheduled. Again, that Lisa has a poll out for us and we'll figure out what meeting in April or what timing in April we want to use for that. Last week, city leadership staff concluded a professional training with our professional trainers, Presscom and Manny and Kale. This was focused on being the coach that they need, meaning how to effectively coach and mentor our employees and our teammates. We had a great session, had lots of good participation, again, continuing to learn professional techniques to help us improve our effectiveness. Some big news today and yesterday with the Prineville Apple Data Center. They did receive the Alliance for Water Stewardship, AWS National Award for the Aquifer Storage and Recharge Project with the city of Prineville. This is an industry first for the data center community. Most importantly, it strengthens Prineville and Crook County as a preferred location for data center development and environmental stewardship. So this is a very important milestone for us to have accomplished. If you recall, this has been a high priority project for, for Eric Klon and his team and very innovative. We're a very small community and to have this kind of technology deployed in partnership with our data center partners is quite remarkable. And it's already paying some very, very significant dividends on how this community is viewed. But also add that this project improves our capacity for growth and is not limited to any particular industry. It's, it's really specific to people who need water, whether that's domestic water or water for other purposes. On the public work side, Street Superintendent Scott Smith has informed us this afternoon that the rails to Drails was paved today or in process. And Scott fully expects the project to be finishing up by the end of next week. So it's another great amenity, a great project with Scott's leadership and working with ODOT to get these funding opportunities turned into real improvements in our community for bike and ped modes to be exercised throughout the community is really fantastic. So great job, Scott, and really appreciate the work on that. And then finally, if you hadn't seen the press release, the Baker Technical Institute, President Doug Dalton announced last couple of days, his opening of technical school here in Prineville, Oregon. This is a culmination of several years of work. I think I've worked with just about every counselor on board with this project, worked very closely with the Shell Foundation with Christie and Mr. Shell, very closely with the school district, very closely with many of our partners in the private sector. Scott Profili at SMF, we also worked with the Pape Group, we also worked with Central Oregon Truck and many and many others around the area to make this happen. And it's actually come full circle. They're going to be concentrating on CDL, truck driving school. They have the latest and greatest technology. It's all enclosed systems where, what's the word I'm looking for? Where you're not in a real system, but Eric, help me out here. What, what do you call that? Oh, like a pilot, pilot train.
Simulator.
Thank you, thank you, Scott. Yeah, so a lot of simulation work done, very, very sophisticated, state of the art. So we're really excited to have BTI as part of our community. It's going to be great for our kids and it's very expandable. So we're going to be looking at work in equipment certification, so equipment operation, drafting, some, some very hands-on stuff in conjunction with the, the programs that the Crook County School District have been so successful with. So great opportunity for Prineville and Crook County, and it'll be a regional asset that I'm sure will get used a lot by our young folks. That concludes my report for tonight. Are there any questions?
Steve, this is Janet. So are they going to have a physical building here in Prineville for that BTI?
No, they, they will not start that way, Janet. They do have brick and mortar up in Baker where they started, Baker City. But they're going to start with some modular systems and then we're actually probably going to start some of that down at the freight depot at the city because we have a lot of paved area there, whether we could do some parking and moving and, and that sort of thing and set up the simulators there. So we have a couple of options. Scott Profili also has a spot that's available and so does Central Oregon Truck, but that would be over in Redmond, so we want to keep it here. Doug Dalton, the president, has full intentions, if the program's successful, Janet, to eventually end up with a brick and mortar classroom type scenario here in our community.
Great. Well, kudos to you and to Eric and to Scott for getting all that stuff done that you mentioned in your report.
No, you're, you're very welcome. Any other questions for me tonight? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Biomass, Mr. Klon.
Evening. For the record, Eric Klon, city engineer. We have a presentation tonight that we'd like to share with council, just getting you up to speed with the efforts we've made related to biomass and some funding opportunities that we'll be bringing to council shortly. So as you know, we've been talking about biomass for a long time. Steve and I have this project we've been working on for, I could safely say the last 20 years. But what we're currently proposing is a 20 megawatt biomass facility. So this would generate power for 20 megawatts. That would be approximately a population of, let's say, 20,000 people with all of the ancillary businesses and stuff. It would also support 35 million board foot per year sawmill and then up to 10 acres of hydroponic greenhouses. So these are all the opportunities that we're looking at. And what we'll be talking about here is why we think we may be successful with this project. So we are going to be able to secure a fuel supply, private fuel supply for the next 20 years. This fuel supply would be made up of urban wood waste and these contracts would have levers in them so that when federal like thinning projects or forest health projects became available, we could pull on these level levers and start to, to acquire those materials from the, the federal government. Typically, this is why biomass has always failed, is that you're dependent upon the federal government. There'll be lawsuits, your fuel stream will dry up and you're in a lot of trouble. One of the things that the city of Prineville has that many others don't is our own city of Prineville Railway. So that will allow us to reach out further than typically for those woody debris. We've selected a site. We have a three-year option on that site. And at the end of the day, this is just a wonderful opportunity to provide, you know, carbon neutral, renewable and most importantly, baseload electric generation. You know, solar is great when the sun shines, but we need something to provide power 24 hours a day. And Steve, as I go through this, please jump in. Next slide.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I would add at this point, Eric, is the urban wood waste has a solar benefit of freeing up room in, in landfills. But also in addition to the urban wood waste is forest products industry residual wood waste would also be part of that stream.
Yeah, so you know, what a better opportunity to burn that material in a controlled environment rather to just put it in a landfill and take up space. So if you remember back to 2019, council brought this opportunity, or the city staff brought this opportunity to council. So we had mentioned Rob Broberg with CRM Energy Solutions. We decided to select him based upon his just vast biomass experience and his relationships with both suppliers and equipment providers. If you remember, we had talked about a study that would cost up to $430,000. We held a public hearing back in November 12th of 2019 and those findings were adopted and a resolution was passed by council and we chose to move forward with Rob at that following meeting. And one of the things we had talked about is that there were some activities, about $30,000 worth of effort that we wanted to get underway, but the big portion of that, the $400,000, we weren't going to move forward with that until we were able to secure funding. And that's what we're here to talk about today. So that $400,000 level of effort, luckily, we've been able to secure $250,000 US Forest Service grant. And we're matching that with $150,000 Energy Trust Grant. So wonderful opportunity for us to take grants to move this project forward. The Energy Trust terms are a little bit interesting, so they're willing to provide $150,000 of funding, which when we combine that with the Woody Innovation, Wood Innovations Grant from the Forest Service, gets us up to that $400,000 that we need. And that meets all of the match requirements we had for that US Forest Service Grant. The terms of that Energy Trust Grant are, because Energy Trust is supported by Pacific Power and PGE, is that we would need to push that power through PGE or Pacific Power, which we're in Pacific Power's region. So that makes all the sense in the world. And that they would like us to start construction of the project by March 31st of 2025. The reason for that requirement is they have their project sunsetting and they're needing to wrap up some, or put some bookends on these awards. More than likely, this Energy Trust funding will be extended out into the future, but this is what we're currently dealing with. And then the big, the big issue is if we were not able to develop that power purchase agreement or start production by March 31st of 2025, they would require us to pay back 67% of their grant. So that would be $100,000. So at the end of the day, worst case scenario, it would be a grant for 33% of the project cost. There's no interest on that, but we really feel like that's a project or a grant we should move forward with. And we're going to bring more details back to council in the near future.
Eric? Janet, can I ask a question, please?
Yep.
On the, it said that you had to execute a power purchase agreement, I believe, on the, the previous slide. And it said you had to do that with either PP and L or, I don't know who the other one was. I don't remember now. And at what point do you have to do that? Is it one, like a couple of years out or?
It's just, Janet, so this program is funded by Pacific Power and PGE. And so they have the requirement that if they put money into a project, that project moves forward. It should support either Pacific Power or PGE. And there's no timelines on that. It's just if, if we had chose to provide this power to Central Electric Co-op, they would want to be refunded because Central Electric Co-op doesn't provide money to this program. But with that said, we're in Pacific Power's territory. And so it would make sense that we would deliver this power to Pacific Power.
Okay, thanks. I just remember when the wind power started up, that a lot of folks were looking at wind, wind power, but then they had a difficult time executing the power purchase agreement when it came to that point.
Yeah, and at the end of the day, you know, the, the success or failure of this project is all based upon that power purchase agreement. You know, if you have a customer that's willing to pay the power, you know, the rate that you need, then you can get funding and you can build your project.
Okay, thank you.
So next slide. So this is the work that we're going to get done with this grant. And this is a breakdown as to how we propose to fund it. These are the different activities. We'll go into more detail with what these activities will provide to the city. But what we'll get at the end of the day is essentially a shovel-ready project or a project where all analysis has been done. We have a very clear understanding of the costs and their requirements to move the project forward. So we will understand what it will take to get our air permit. We'll have a preliminary air permit in place. We'll understand all of the cost of the construction of the facility. We'll have the preliminary design done and really have a project that's not Pinesky. It's a project that's ready to go. If we find a customer, we can say with much certainty, here is the price that we need. We have material source that will fire this facility for the next 20 years and all, here are all of your benefits. So we're very excited about this. This is a very, very in-depth feasibility study. But for a project like this, this is what we need to do. We need to do our due diligence. So next slide. So we're just going to walk through in the next few slides what we're doing. And I wanted to provide counsel with a few, I call them fast facts on biomass. You know, what are the benefits of biomass? So the first small task is a site development analysis. This is where we will take time and investigate the site that we've selected. We'll do a whole boundary and top topographic survey, review all of the zoning requirements, look at the easements requirements that it would take to get transmission lines into this property and out of this property and really make sure it's going to work, that it's the right one. And then. And then a fast fact on this, but fast fact on this biomass project. Is that if we were to create a 20 megawatt biomass facility and if we were to fire it just solely off of the federal government's land. We could treat up to 17,000 acres per year. So this would be, you know, not clear cuts. This would be thinning activities and activities that would really improve. Forest health, we would lower wildfire risk and make that forest healthy towards. Increasing the carbon sequestration. But it's important to note, you know, we don't want to depend upon the federal government. So we'll have all of these private contracts in place. And then just have the ability to say to the federal government, you know, make projects available and we'll take the wood off of it. Next slide. The next step will be the investment grade fuel study. So Rob has been working on this fuel supply. Agreement for the last 10 years and this. Level of effort will be to secure those contracts. So at the end of the day. We would have contracts for private wood supply that would be locked in for the next 20 years. And most importantly, those contracts would have levers to where we could speed them up or slow them down. Depending upon the ability to treat forest lands. Fast fact is, you know, biomass reduced land face landfill waste. By utilizing it for energy and energy generation. This is incredibly important with our railroad. That could potentially allow us to reach out to. Landfills farther and farther away to take their woody debris and. General rule of thumb is that a 20 megawatt facility, we would have for 15 permanent jobs. At the facility and then up to 100 jobs providing material to that facility. Steve, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
No, no, I think that's great.
Okay. Next task is task is this preliminary preliminary permit assessment and that design. So what this would do is develop a roadmap for how we are going to permit this facility. And really just determines a timeframe for how we would go through that. So that as we, at the end of this project. Start talking to potential customers, we can assure them that there's no. Unsurmountable, you know, hurdles in our way that would prevent us from being able to move this project forward. Fast fact we have here is the advanced technologies that we would put on. The exhaust stacks, these. Exhaust stacks have what you call an electrostatic scrubber. So you have a. Series of metal plates that have some static charge to them as the material flows through. The exhaust particle flows through there, they're attracted to that static electricity. And the good news to that is if we were to compare burning. The material in a biomass facility versus an open burn like we experienced last summer. We can pull out over 99% of those contaminants. So these are the bad things like the PM 10 and the PM 2.5. That everybody struggled with last fall and summer. And if we burn this material in a controlled environment, we can pull 99% of that out of the air. We all know that that material is going to burn whether we like it or not. So let's burn it in a controlled environment. Next slide. The big part of this is a feed study. So that's a front end engineering and design report. So this is a very detailed and in-depth design. We're going to design the facility down to a two-inch valve. So that tells you, you know, how far we're going to take it. Do a drill technical report, develop a scope, develop the project budget. And once again, the theme to this is just that we will. Have a very, very strong understanding of the cost of what it will take to move this project forward. And as we talk to potential customers, you know, we're not talking about if, we're talking about when and we can give them a good level of. Understanding and security and what we're telling them is true. Now the fast fact here is obviously biomass and local generation increases community resiliency. So. Solar is great, power is great, but at the end of the day, the sun doesn't shine all the time. The wind doesn't blow all the time. And what this is, is this is renewable energy that is baseload. And so in the event of like the Cascadia. Earthquake, you know, the Willamette Valley recently had the horrible ice storm. We would be able to provide our customers with 20 megawatts of power here in central Oregon. So you think about. All of Pranville without the data centers, that's about 10 megawatts of power. That's with the mills running and things like that. And. There's potential as we design this facility that. We could provide power to, you know, a good deal of Pacific Power customers. In our local region in the event of an emergency. Obviously, if we have a horrible ice storm, we're going to ask our local mills. To not consume that power, but there's a lot of homes out there that we could provide secure power for. Next slide. One of the last tasks is this financial model. So we will hire some very smart tax people and they'll go into. Developing an internal rate of return, that break even analysis, net present value. And all of that information just to show a customer that we understand what we're going into. And once again. If we tell them it's going to cost X dollars per megawatt hour, they're going to know that we can deliver it to them. Fast fact here is one of the things we'd like to be able to do is have an outlet for juniper removal activities. So if we were able to go out and remove juniper, that greatly increases water availability and watershed. Watershed health and it really improves soil and water quality. Junipers consume a massive amount of water. Junipers typically weren't as dense as they currently are, but ever since we started controlling wildfires. We're left with the issue we currently have. And so we'd be happy, Steve and I'd be happy to answer any questions about biomass. This is just something that we're very passionate about. We think this is. You know, maybe where I was 10 years ago, talking to you guys about the wetland project or five years ago, talking to you about the ASR project. This is the potential to, you know, just keep us doing those right. Environmental projects for the right fiscal reasons. And so we're pretty excited about it. Next steps would be probably at the next council meeting, we'll bring an agreement for that Energy Trust money and then. If council decides to move forward with that, we'll just. Start rolling on this big project. So we're really excited about it, which I'm sure you can probably tell. Any questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, you know, just to. Chime in here a little bit with Eric's, what Eric's saying is. What we've seen, you know, since Eric and I started this journey truly 20 years ago, but even as we became. More familiar with some of the attributes that the city of Pranville has as it relates to the railroad, its proximity to the forests. And then with the data centers being these big users of electricity. And as a result of that, we have, for example. The state's largest concentration of solar farms here in Creek County. Well, as Eric says, what, what do we do to balance that load when the sun isn't shining in the night? They need baseload power like what we're talking about, whether they charge batteries or whether they just bridge the gap. And so that changes things and it's made the reality and the practicality of a biomass facility. Even more so. The other thing I'd like to remind counsel is about eight years ago. When we ran into some constraints with capacity with PGE, with CEC, with mid-state electric. And Pacific Power as it related to trying to cite more data center development or large industrial development. Bonneville Power Administration, who supplies a vast majority of hydropower to the utilities that serve central Oregon. Did a study and the study was how do we gain more capacity? For what they refer to as the central Oregon bubble, the shoots, crook, Jefferson, a little bit of North Clamott. And their study concluded very, very specifically. That local generation was the most cost effective way to increase capacity for growth in the central Oregon market. And so what Eric and I have experienced, especially over the last, I'm going to say 18 months, maybe two years is a real. Shift in thinking from the state, a shift in thinking from the utilities. A shift in thinking from the data center community and other large industrial users. And really not only from a local level or a state level, but also for a national level where. Eighteen months ago, two years ago, three years ago, anything combustible was deemed non-effective. And that is shifting a lot, large part in due to the, the forest fire issues and that effect on. Living quality and air quality and all those things that go with it. So Eric and I really have experienced a. Very significant shift to where biomass really starts to make some sense. And we've been able to answer a lot of questions as to the supply to break away from. A federal government only type supply scenario, which would never work. And we, we need the federal government, but not as the foundation. And so this has really come full circle for us. And we think the timing is right. And the interesting thing is the attributes in Pranville that brought us the sawmill industry and the remand industry after World War Two. It's actually brought us the data centers because of our climate here these last 10, 12 years. This, our attributes here in Pranville and central Oregon and Creek County are also bringing us this opportunity. And we really hope that the council will support us on this. This is going to be a great thing if we can pull it off.
One of the things that really excites me about all of this is that while other communities talk about their environmental efforts. We're actually, we actually have boots on the ground and have been doing things like the. Treatment, water treatment, the aquifer storage and recovery besides the wetlands, the golf course, the, you know, these, these efforts. Truly are environmentally positive. And we are making a difference and to be able to put the weight, put the biomass project in place. Would be just a huge, huge step forward for us to, again. Be environmentally sensitive, but actually producing a product and moving forwards.
I like to think that we're doing. These wonderful environmental projects for the right fiscal reasons. And I think this just fits in there perfectly. And yeah, we're all excited to see it move forward and we hope this is something that the council gets behind.
Agreed.
Questions or comments for Eric?
I had a question. This is Patricia Youngman. What site have you identified? You said you had a site in mind?
So we have a site that's located adjacent to the railroad. Steve, I don't know, is that something that we can?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we should. I believe we're under an NDA on that. But we, we can share that potentially as we get closer in executive.
Or we could share it maybe confidentially, Patricia, with you.
And a project like this, how many years does it from start to finish or completion?
So James, would you mind bringing up that PowerPoint and going to the first slide? We have that broken down. So, you know, Janet, we've been working at this with starts and stops. But this next step is going to be the, you know, the big step here. And so you'll see here, we're planning this feasibility funding. This summer, you know, the spring, summer, we would be done by late summer. And at the end of that. Level of effort, we have a project that's fundable. We have a project that you can go out there and sell. And somebody could start funding, you know, how long will that funding take? We're currently working with people. We're trying to drum up that interest. We've had multiple meetings with data centers interests. We've had multiple meetings with like environmental power providers. We've had several meetings with the state, you know, you think about if you're the mayor of the little town of Talent and your town just burned up. Maybe this would be a power mix that you might be interested in. So once we secure that funding, then we would feel comfortable moving forward. Permitting would be 18 to 24 months. That construction would be another 18 to 24 months. Those could work. In parallel, but potentially we could have this up and running by 2025. So. It'll take a while, but at the end of the day, this will be hopefully a project that other communities can. Copy into the future and really do some good things for our environment.
That's exciting. I would like to see it by 2025. That would be just absolutely amazing. Thank you so much for your work on that.
Yeah, it would be absolutely amazing. That would be one of the best things I think we've accomplished. So. We'll see.
Thank you for your question, Janet. Other questions or comments?
Well, this is Janet now, so I do have a question. So Eric, could we get a copy of that PowerPoint for the counselors and that way? The, the folks that aren't here, they'll be able to see what you're looking at if you're going to bring it to the council on the next council session.
Yeah, there, there was a lot of good information there, Janet. So I had planned. To send that to the council members that weren't present. We'll for sure send it to you as well. And then we've developed. With just scraping money together here and there, some pretty good. Media for this. So this would be like handouts that we can provide to potential customers. And so. Tomorrow morning, I'll send you guys some information and, you know, please review that and catch up with me with any questions.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We appreciate the support.
Eric, thank you. Thank you for all your hard work on this. Okay, let's move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports from the council members? None? Okay, well, I attended multiple meetings, so. Limited to four that I went to report on co-act wishlist, if you will. The central Oregon area council on transportation. We discussed to the extension of Combs Flat and Peters Road. We talked about redevelopment of. Because of the redevelopment of wood grain property, the need for railroad crossing of North Main Street. Reactivating that crossing and. And addressing the transportation issues that that's going to bring up with the intersection at Peters and North Main. And we also commented about the Elliot Lane intersection because of the safety and that's the Elliot Lane. Intersection where we have the railroad overpass and the. Columns supporting that bridge are, are pretty close together. So there are some limitations and some safety issues. Next, Community Renewable Energy Association Korea, we listened to Scott Bolton with Pacific Power and Light. And talking about Senate Bill 1547, elimination of coal and fuel electricity. And how that's going to be, how Pacific Power is going to be addressing that and the needs for. For electricity in the future. And there were several pieces of other legislation that were being discussed as well on that. League of Oregon Cities Legislative Committee that I serve on, we talked about. The wildfire piece of legislation and also the prevailing wage bill moving forward. Sounds like that's kind of a freight train. I'm not sure that it's going to get stopped. The concern is what sort of an image that will put, that will create for Oregon in attracting industry to Oregon as a whole. And it's not going to be favorable if they put it through in the manner that it's being pushed. And then lastly, I serve on the Advisory Committee for the Department of Transportation. It's a transportation policy group. And we talked about review for the 2024 to 2027. Stip, we talked about the federal COVID relief funds. And the multi-modal strategic plan as well as. Legislative session related issues. So that is predominantly what was covered in those meetings. Questions, concerns? Okay, with nothing, we'll move on to ordinances. There are none. We'll move to resolutions. Resolution number 1477 approving a. Resolution number one four seven seven approving a personal services agreement with Dowell LLC, Eric Klon.
Once again, Eric Klon, City Engineer, PowerPoint to discuss this opportunity with council. So hopefully we can pull that up. So this resolution is related to a professional agreement that we'd like to move forward with. Related to the design of a road extension. So most of the council had seen this before. But you'll realize or you'll understand that we recently adopted a concept plan for the Barnes Boot Property. That we purchased in the last few years. We reached out to the community. Got a lot of wonderful input as to how we should developer, develop that property. Or maybe more importantly, not develop it and keep it as open space. So next slide. So that plan and um all of the input we got from the community, we realized that we needed to. Extend Combs Flat Road up to Peters. Right now, if you're moving from north to south. There's a section where Main Street is your only way to do that. Um that was one of the reasons why we purchased this property. And just, you know, something that needs to be done. This is probably quickly becoming, you know, your public works department's number one priority. So next slide. Last spring, we did a resolution with council support. And we selected Dowell, who is an engineering company out of Redmond, to begin that preliminary design of the road. And develop a cost estimate. So. Working with that company, working with the irrigation district as the canal will be piped. We came up with a conceptual design from Combs Flat to Peters. And then we took that to final design. So that's what we've been working on diligently for the last several months. And we really feel like we got a project that will work with the canal piping um and best serve our community. So there may be some questions about that canal piping. We are incorporating that. Piping into our design because it's going to be located adjacent to our new road. And in some areas, it will be underneath the road, but Ocho Irrigation District paid for that engineering. They have an engineer of record. He developed the design and we basically just incorporated it into our drawings. And then we also developed a conceptual design from Maine all the way down to LaMonte. At the end of the day, it would be wonderful to extend Combs Flat to Peters, Peters all the way down to LaMonte. The reason we did this is we knew there was a potential for some um future stimulus projects coming up. And we want to have this project ready to go. This section of the project, we own all of the prod, the property that we would need. Or we are obtaining the right away. And it's gonna be expensive. You know, our first cost estimate at this is five point eight million dollars. And so that's why we're trying to get this project ready to go to where if there is stimulus funding, we could use that to build this project. The next steps would be, um now that we have a final design, we would have Al Dowell. Provide us with the, you know, legal recordable survey. All of the environmental studies that would need to be done and big projects like this using federal money. There's a lot of reports that we need to provide. So all of these acronyms, that would be Department of State Lands. U S Army Corps of Engineers, National Marine Fisheries. Steve, help me with that. NWFS, I think. I I miss, that's National Marine Fisheries.
Yeah, that that name's not, yeah, you that, that should be a name. Yep.
Um U S Fish and Wildlife Service, ODFNW, DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality and others. So they would be preparing all the reports that we would need to have to be able to spend. Federal dollars, they would do all the geotech. We're gonna be crossing a fairly large wetland, so we want to make sure the road is done right. And at the end of the day, they would give us construction drawings and construction documents to where we could go to bid on this project. And so what we'd like to do tonight is have council approve this resolution. That would allow us to enter into a personal service agreement with Dowell for the design of this section of the road. The contract price is two hundred and sixteen thousand, which I appreciate. That's a lot of money, but at the end of the day, that's three point seven percent of the project cost. And usually, projects such as this would be more like ten percent. So I think we've done a good job there. And then also importantly is this would be funded by transportation system development charges. So this is not rate pairs. This is new businesses or new homes coming into town. And those fees they pay to negate their impact onto the transportation system. Is there any questions or anything, Steve, you'd like to provide?
Mr. Forster, do you have any?
No, no, this is, this is a great, great project. And and I think, you know, we've had good success uh here in this community by being ready. And having some skin in the game when those federal opportunities do come forward. I think the Rails of Trails is a great example of that. So Eric's right on the money. Uh the city wants to be in a position to have this ready to go. Uh and the two hundred and sixteen as a percentage uh is a very, very competitive uh uh piece of that total cost. So we're hoping that we can get some council support on on getting this resolution passed.
I was surprised as low as it was.
Yep.
Are there any questions from the council?
This is Janet, I'm sorry. Um so is there funding on the last stimulus that was passed? They said a lot, or there was some money set aside for infrastructure. Is is that one of them that you're looking at? For that five point eight, what was it, million or billion or whatever it was to develop the road? Is is that what you're looking at trying to um touch with some of those funding?
Yeah, so there's currently a package that just recently went out. And we've been in close contact with staff for both our senators and our congressmen on that. But what this would be is related to this new stimulus package that's coming out, um Ms. Hutchinson. So you you may have heard, but they're talking about a three trillion dollar transportation. Stimulus package coming out. And that's currently working its way through the legislature. But that's what we want is just to have these big projects ready to go. Um no hurdles in place. And so yes, you know, probably the second stimulus package that we're going to see. But if not, potentially that first one.
Okay, thank you.
And this, this section of road is one of the highest priorities we've had on our, on our transportation plan. Um for the city for quite some time, for a number of years. That's been a priority for our transportation plan. So this is a huge piece to be able to put in place and reduce the impact on the the third Main Street intersection. As well as get the kids safely from the north part of town over to the schools, people over to the hospital without having to drive down through. The corner of town. It's a very important project.
So it'll be wonderful to be ready to go. Um a big portion of this, and it's not included in our cost, but would be the cost of piping the canal. And it appears that the irrigation district has federal funding coming through that would make that. Feasible within the next two years. So you know, this could all just work out perfectly where we get our design and all the permitting done. That stimulus package comes in, the irrigation district gets their money and we just do. One massive project and greatly improve transportation needs. And then I would just absolutely love to get that canal piped. So that we don't have that safety issue.
Hey, Counselor Hutchinson, I know you had a few questions. Did you get those answered before the meeting?
I did. Thank you. Thank you to both you and Steve and Eric for answering them.
No problem. Um are there any other questions or concerns or is there a motion to approve resolution number one four seven seven?
And I will move to approve resolution number one four seven seven approving a personal service agreement with Dowell LLC.
Thank you.
This is Counselor Hutchinson. I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion with a second to approve resolution number one four seven seven. Again, on any questions, concerns? All right, we'll go through a roll call vote.
Oh, you got, you got a question?
Counselor Youngman, I just applaud you all. I think this is amazing project. The sooner we get it done, the better.
Thank you. Then if I call on you for a vote, you'll say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Counselor Merritt?
Aye.
Counselor Hutchinson, how do you vote?
Aye.
And and I vote aye as well. So we have the unanimous approval of resolution number one four seven seven. Let's move on then to resolution number one four seven eight, authorizing. Authorization to efficiently minimize or mitigate the effects of COVID. Jared Reed.
Yes, good evening, council. Thank you, Jared Reed. The record resolution number fourteen seventy-eight. It's a resolution that we've looked at every month since uh last March, March twenty twenty. Uh it is under chapter thirty-one of Primeville City Code and it's dealing with uh the declaration of emergency. That has been caused by the COVID nineteen pandemic. We are asking for the council to consider renewing this resolution this month and going through April. Uh we will be analyzing or reviewing this resolution over the next couple of weeks. Um as many of you know, this resolution is primarily uh been utilized to help the city achieve funding. Through both state and national funding sources that may or may not be necessary in the next coming weeks. Uh so we'll be reviewing that. Uh however, um. Our optimism may be a little too premature at this point as well. Um there, as I think many of you know, uh there was a lot of Oregon counties that have been going down the risk level. However, five counties are likely moving up. I know four definitely are moving from either lower to high or high to extreme. And then one, I believe, is being put on a a watch list. So we're gonna be monitoring that over the next couple of weeks. And then we'll be bringing this resolution uh back to council if it's uh extended at the second meeting in April. For a a more thorough discussion about its need moving forward.
All right, are there any questions?
Jared, do we continue this until as long as Governor Brown has the state of emergency for COVID?
We don't necessarily have to do that. And that's one of the things that we'll be researching over the next couple of weeks. Is how necessary is this resolution in light of state and re- uh not regional state. And county declarations of emergency. So when we started doing the declarations of emergencies, uh it wasn't necessary. Or we felt it was necessary for funding. It also allows us to tap into emergency procurement of goods and services. Which we haven't been, we haven't had to really utilize during the course of this pandemic. Um so I guess that's a long answer to your question in that the state emergency is important. Uh but because of the state emergency, we may not have to have a local emergency.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve uh uh resolution number one four seven eight?
This is Counselor Hutchinson. I'll make a motion to approve resolution one four seven eight.
Is there a second?
This is Counselor Youngman. I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh thank both of you. Again, any questions? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Counselor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Counselor Youngman?
Aye.
As the merit?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So we have the unanimous approval. Move on then to resolution number one four seven nine, authorizing the city to enter into an intergovernmental agency. Agreement with the state of Oregon through the office of the Chief Information Officer. Mr. Wilson?
Good evening, council. For the record, James Wilson, Technology Manager. Uh before you this evening, resolution fourteen seventy-nine. Uh this is regarding a state program called Oregon Alert. Uh this matter really deals with the evolution of our local public alerting system. Uh it started a number of years ago as a product that we called Reverse Nine One One. And that was where nine-one-one call centers could dial out. And they could push messages out to landline telephones uh in the event of an emergency. Uh about four years ago, we evolved that system into a system we called Alert Creek County. Which allowed for people to go to a website and register non-landline phones. So we did that in an effort to start capturing uh cell phones and voice over IP because landlines were on the way out. Uh that Alert Creek County system has taken on about sixty-two hundred subscribers. So we have about, read about six thousand people in our database. That we're able to reach uh with targeted messaging that's uh that could be used for a number of public safety reasons. Uh that alerting is based on a county system. So every county handles those alerts uh the way they, the way they've developed in that county. Some counties haven't expanded to even capture those those cell uh numbers. Uh some use different products for that. Uh one of the things that was identified uh last year during the Memorial Day or Memorial Day weekend. Uh conflagrations where a number of uh, you know, fast-moving, dynamic wildfire events uh across the state started. Was that there was really no good way to connect all of those systems. And one of the real uh takeaways from that was the gap in the ability to push out. Targeted messaging across the entire state or to a region uh beyond a county system. The uh the state took from that uh basically a a way of connecting all those systems. So that there was a statewide fabric for that local targeted alerting. But still to offer a program to where local jurisdictions could push very specific within a mile or two radius type messaging. Out for when those needs arise at a local level. Uh the nice thing about this is the the product that the state chose to do this statewide network is the same product that we chose four years ago. So nothing is really changing on the technical side. This is more of an administrative change. To where the system that we're using will be rolled into uh the statewide uh Oregon Alert system, which is the the new system. Uh the nice part um for us is that that uh that means if you've already registered for our Alert Creek County system, you're already in. So that those uh those registrations will stay. We won't need to recreate that database. Uh you'll just be part of a larger statewide system. Uh the other thing that this uh IGA with the state brings us is it brings us a direct tie to what's known as the IPOS system. And so that allows us to take those local messages and then feed that into IPOS, which accesses a number of other alerting systems. So that allows us to tie into uh WIA, which is Wireless Emergency Alerts. And also the Legacy Emergency Broadcast System, which hits um, you know, public television and broadcast radio. So we we currently have the ability to utilize those systems, but it's through an IGA with the Chutes County. To where we have to send that information to another county to then push that information into that system. This IGA would unify that to where we have direct access to push that messaging into those systems should that need arise. The other nice part about this agreement is it enables that cross-county messaging. So we have a lot of area where uh we have um, we have incidents that could occur like on the Deschutes-Crook border. To where we might have something that's just inside Creek County that we know, want to notify a three or four mile radius about. But half of those people we would want to be notifying are in Deschutes County. Today, we do a message for the people that are in Creek County and then we send our message to the Deschutes Call Center. And then they have to push another message to the two miles that are on their border. So we'll be overlapping the borders by about five miles either way to where if you've signed up in Creek County, but you kind of live on that border. Deschutes County would be able to push a message into that area and we would be able to push a message into the Deschutes side for a crook incident. That's actually in our county, but could affect a few miles on the other side. Uh the final uh piece of this is some financial savings. The uh the state has opted to uh pay for this as a statewide contract. Um our current product uh costs about five thousand a year. So this would be about a five K savings in the Emergency Dispatch Fund. Other than that, um IGA has been reviewed by uh City Attorney Reed for legal sufficiency and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Wilson? Sounds like a good program. Um James, is there, is the Shake Alert project? Will that be incorporated into this?
Yeah, so the, that is one of the uh, one of the the projects on the state level that would uh potentially be accessed, be able to access uh these feeds in the future. In the future.
Okay, thank you. Unless there are any other questions, says there a motion to approve resolution number one four seven nine?
This is Counselor Youngman. I'll make a motion to approve resolution fourteen seventy-nine. Authorizing the city to enter into an IGA agreement with the state of Oregon through the office. Officer, Chief Information Officer.
Thank you. Thank you, counselor. Is there a second?
This is Counselor Hutchinson. I'll second.
Thank you, counselor. Thank you, Counselor. All right, again, any last questions or concerns? Okay, hearing none. Counselor Hutchinson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Youngman?
Aye.
Counsel Merritt?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so we have the unanimous approval. That's it for the resolution. And my knowledge, we have no visitors, appearances, and requests in writing. Is that correct, Mr. Wilson?
That is correct. I believe none were received by the deadline.
Okay, and at this time, Mr. Reed, will you give us the information about them? We're going to go into an executive session, and we will be coming back out briefly, but Mr. Reed will be giving us the proper detail for process.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As Mary indicated, the City of Primeville City Council will be meeting in an executive session pursuant to RS 192660, Paragraph 2, Subsection H, which allows the City Council to consult with its attorney to discuss current litigation or litigation that is more likely than not to be filed. Mr. Wilson, have any newspaper representatives requested to be present?
They have not.
All right, and so just for a reminder, and for the public, no decision will be made in executive session. From, as Bear, or I'm sorry, Council President Offerman stated, we will be coming back after executive session into regular session, just so everybody's aware of how logistically that works. President Offerman will adjourn, or not adjourn, but go into recess, and we'll have about five minutes to reconnect to our Zoom link that takes us to our executive session. For the public who's watching on Facebook, the Facebook stream will go to a blank screen, but will remain live. And when the council resumes in regular session, we will come back on video. Unless anyone has any questions, President, or Council President Offerman, you may seek recess.
Okay, at this point, I will recess this meeting, and we will reconvene in five minutes.
Thank you, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you everybody, good night.